Wow, that was quick. Okay, guys, here we go. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, June 27, 2001. The council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at approximately 10:00. I think I'm going to start saying approximately 10:30 because it's closer. There are 15 council districts. We are being viewed on Channel 35, and we are also available by council phone. Please call the roll.
Bernsen, Sheik, Fear, Garcetti, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, really Thomas, Oneich, Wax, Walters, Galanter, 11 members present in the forum, Madam President.
Thank you. First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And those two.
And before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items requested to be continued. Item number 10, the applicant requests continuance to October 3rd.
Wow.
Okay. Wow, that was quick. Okay, guys, here we go. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, June 27, 2001. The council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at approximately 10 o'clock. I think I'm going to start saying approximately 10:30 because it's closer. There are 15 council districts. We are being viewed on Channel 35, and we are also available by council phone. Please call the roll.
Bernsen, Cheek, Fear, Garcetti, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, really, Thomas, Savornic, Wex, Walters, Galanter. Eleven members present in the forum, Madam President.
Thank you. First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And those two.
And before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items requested to be continued. Item number 10, the applicant requests continuance to October 3rd.
Wow. Any objection? Item 10 is continued to October 3rd.
Item number 12, I request to continue that to July 11th, which is two weeks.
All right. Any objection? Item 12 is continued until, for two weeks.
And item number 17, that item can be received and filed in as much as the assessment has been paid.
All right. Without objection, item 17 is received and filed.
And item number 44, that item can also be received and filed in as much it was acted on on Friday.
Oh, good for us. All right. Item 44 is received and filed.
And Madam President, I believe there are several presentations. Do you wish to...
Yes, there are. I was just going to do that. Nate first. All right. Mr. Holden, would you like to do your presentations?
Stand on this side.
Can we give the names of the other people some to introduce, or she can...
You're going to introduce one more person.
I know. Madam President, and members of the council, I feel I'm overjoyed about introducing the individual representing Jamaica. The Honorable Portia Simpson Miller has served as Jamaica's Minister of Tourism and Sports since February of 2000. Before I go on to give more background information and to extend the certificate of welcome to the City of Los Angeles, I want to just say to the members of the council, those who are here today and supported the program, and those who are not, but Jamaica continuously thank each and every one of you, including the City of Los Angeles, for what they did for Jamaica when they had the hurricane and took out all of the traffic control signals. I was serving as Chairman of Transportation at the time, and the cry, the plea came out, "We need help in Jamaica. Will you help us?" I'm glad to say that the City of Los Angeles provided its surplus equipment, those traffic control signals, and sent them to Jamaica where they had them installed, and now they're operating continuously, providing safety in Kingston and other parts of Jamaica. So, the City of Los Angeles feels a kinship, now and before, to Jamaica. And I try to talk like this, man. I am on. She has more than 26 years of government experience. As Minister, Ms. Miller will react with various sporting organizations around the world. For example, she's working with the International Football Association. Jamaica has a team called the Reggae Boys. They don't sing, they play football, and they do a good job at it, too. The team is trying to qualify for the next World Cup game. When they played against the U.S., no goals were scored. A rematch is scheduled for October in Boston. U.S. is going to be well-challenged. Ms. Simpson Miller also promotes Jamaica as a prime Caribbean tourist destination. She is here in the Southland for Jamaican jamboree at the University of City Walk that begins tomorrow and runs until Sunday. And I'm going to extend invitation to all of you. If there's a fee to be paid, you will pay it, and you're still invited. Is that all right? I'm sure we all will be invited, and we have been. Colleagues, may I present the Honorable Portia Simpson Miller. And before she comes forward, I want to acknowledge Director of Tourism, Fay Pickers Gill. And you raise your hand, they'll know who you are, Director. And now here's the, I present to you the Honorable Portia Simpson Miller from Jamaica.
Thank you very much, Honorable Councilman. I want to take this opportunity to thank the people of Los Angeles for the warmth and hospitality since our arrival here. But I want to pause to say a very big thank you to you, Councilman, and to members of the council for support to Jamaica, and to thank you for your assistance during our period of need. And I really, we are grateful, and I want to express on behalf of the government and the people of Jamaica, our sincere thanks to you and appreciation this morning. And I hope that the bond of friendship that existed between our two countries will grow from strength to strength. I want to thank you for your warm welcome here this morning, and I look forward to greeting you, Councilman, in Jamaica not long from now. And as Minister of Tourism, I want to take this opportunity to invite all of you to visit Jamaica, the land of reggae music, the one-loved country, and as we say, "Come to Jamaica, and you'll feel all right." Thank you very much for having us this morning.
The Ambassador Cleve Neal, he lives here. I've known, Honorary Ambassador. I've known Cleve for many years, and he's been a good man and has been a good servant of the people in our community. Cleve Neal, Honorary Ambassador to Jamaica. I just might acknowledge one other contribution of Jamaica to the City of Los Angeles and the State of California. Just about every medical director of the Martin Luther King Hospital and also the Drew Medical School, and many of those doctors who head up the various departments at Martin Luther King and other hospitals throughout the Southland. Eminem came from Jamaica, basically had that basic training in Jamaica, came to the U.S. and now saving lives, protecting people in our community. I don't know where they get that kind of noise, that kind of intellect, but they do have it, and they're willing to share it with us, and they have already. Thank you for all you've done for us, as small a country as you are.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Savornic for a series of presentations.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I would like to ask my staff to please join me here around the podium. For today is a bittersweet day for me personally, and I'm sure many of you around the horseshoe here in the 15th Council District in the City of Los Angeles. Today is a day that all of us will face one day in this era of term limits. And today I would like to honor my staff for their many years of working with me on behalf of the people of the 15th District as well as the people of the City of Los Angeles as a whole. You know, those of us in elected office are allowed to, by the grace of the voters in each of our districts, to take the limelight, to stand in front of the podium and behind the microphone, and do a lot of the public work that in private those standing with me do. I would be less than a councilman and less than a gentleman if I did not take time this morning prior to my departure in a few days not to personally thank them, to honor them for allowing me to be the councilman that I was able to grow into. As each and every one of you know, when you first arrive at City Hall, the path can be a little treacherous until you get your feet wet and learn the ropes. And part of the job is assembling folks that work with you to help you do your job. I consider myself one of the luckiest individuals to have ever lived in the City of Los Angeles and in the Harbor area, not only for being elected councilman, but being able to work with a staff who I consider among the best folks that I've ever had the honor of working with. What I'm going to do, Madam President, with your permission, I would like to recognize each one of them individually, present them their plaque, and then we will do our photographs and the remainder in the back room and the press room. First of all, I would like to acknowledge my Watts District Office staff, Administrative Aid Arthur Ibarra, Community Service Aid Shontae Taylor, and my Watts Community Deputy Simone Starr Parker. Next, my Administrative Aid here, excuse me, at San Pedro District Office, the Harbor District Office, Laurel Galant, my Community Service Aid Tina Quebec, my Community Service Aid Lynn Carlin, my Assistant Deputy Councilman for Community Services, Mike Molina, my Deputy Councilwoman for Community Services. I'm going to get through this. Irene Mendoza, my Administrative Aid Miriam Lopez, my Economic Development and Legislative Deputy John Coza, my Planning and Housing Deputy Sarah Grossman, my Deputy Councilman for City Services Eric Moody, my Executive Assistant Cindy Varela, my Assistant Chief of Staff Dan Cartagena, and my Chief of Staff Barry Glickman. If you would just give me a moment to present these to them, and then I will conclude. Madam President, again, we will, we will do our personal goodbyes in the press room, but I think each and every one of us know that behind the scenes in a council office, a lot of work goes on on behalf of the people that the council members are elected to represent. I believe that we were able in Council District 15 to put together a diverse, dynamic group of individuals that got the job done. Prior to my leaving, I want to offer my sincere thanks to each and every one of them. One of the things that we were mentioning this morning is that term limits kind of arbitrarily scatters everyone to the wind. Some of my staff have been able to find places to land in city government. There are some that are still looking. And for those of you who want some good folks, let me know. Others are transitioning to the private sector. But I would like to personally thank them on behalf of the people that I represent. I would like to thank them for allowing me to grow into the councilman that I would hope that I always wanted to be. Madam President, members of the council, would you please join me in honoring my staff?
Rudy, why don't you get a picture of everybody with the flag and all the stuff in the back, too?
For my first and last time here at the podium, well, maybe not my last time, I may come back. I would just like to say that on behalf of the staff, it has been a privilege and an honor to serve the people of the 15th District in the City of Los Angeles, to serve Councilman Rudy Savornic Jr. And I thank him for giving us the chance to do that. I wish you all well on behalf of the staff, and I wish Councilmen Savornic well as well. Thank you.
Mr. Holden?
Members of the council and the citizens of the City of Los Angeles, you witness here today a good example why term limits are evil for our city and for our community. That's a such, we're going to lose an experienced, well-trained member of the City Council, as in most of his staff, who accessed and acquired so much information and knowledge and skills, and now they're not going to be around to continue in the work that they've been performing for the past eight years. Shame, shame, shame. I'm going to ask Mayor Richard Reardon, that I can call Mayor for the next four or five days, to try to initiate another ballot measure to repeal term limits, and to permit the voters of each district to decide who can best represent them. Rudy, I just want you to know, it's been a pleasure getting to know you and working with you, though you're from another part of the city, unknown to me for a period of time, but I've come to loving, liking to love and appreciate because of what you have done and what you've shared with us in the council. You know, you're not the only one. We have a pal next to me as well. His day will come when he'll be before the podium. We're going to miss you and all who have served and served so well. The public should know that. Those who are listening today on Channel 35 or wherever else should know that your team is one of the greatest. They earned every dollar they were paid, and they served the city well, and the city got its money's worth. We love you, we appreciate you, we thank you for what you've done for this city. We hope we can help keep you around for a while. At least, I'm going to try to make sure that happens. Thank you very much.
Hold on, guys, we have more. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, Rudy. I had a wonderful, wonderful evening a few Fridays ago. I had a chance to come down to San Pedro, and I had dinner for the first time at the Dalmatian Club. And it was one of the farewell tributes for Rudy Savornic, put together by the community. And it was a special night for Rudy. And as much as I enjoyed being there for Rudy and sort of getting the community perspective and experience of Rudy, because we get to know Rudy here in the horseshoe and on City Council, I was really struck by the level of community support by the presence of his staff, and really moved by the highlight video that was put together, and how the staff has gone about addressing the issues under Rudy's leadership for the last eight years, from economic development to housing to basic services, and the huge issues of the presence of the harbor right there and the port activities adjacent to the district. And knowing how my office works, you know, people like Rudy, people like I, we can make promises, but we're usually not the ones that keep them. It's the staff that keeps them. It's the staff that does the work. It's the staff that burns the midnight oil. It's the staff that figures out the way, but we don't know how it's going to get done. And so, my experience is that night, I know Rudy was glowing because of the accomplishments, but we know how things get done. And so, if Rudy was as successful as he has been, if Rudy is as beloved in his district as I saw that night, then I know a lot of that cred- as I saw that night, then I know a lot of that credit goes to the people who were behind him, both in City Hall and especially in the field offices, who are on the front lines of making things happen. So to each and every one of you, I know you have your specific accomplishment and activity that you'd like to point to, but really, my hat's off to you, my respects to you, and my congratulations to each and every one of you.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, Mr. President, Members of the council, this is a sad moment because we're seeing some very dedicated people who have served this city and served the councilman very, very well, and I want to personally thank them and wish them the best for the future. I also want to comment a little bit about the councilman. Anybody who would drive all the way from San Pedro, not Pedro, but Pedro, right, to City Hall deserves to be councilmember. And Rudy was willing to do that, so they elected him twice. But it really has been a pleasure serving with him. He's been a very valuable member. I think he tried very, very hard to serve his constituents in the city of Los Angeles, and I personally feel like I'm not losing a friend because I'm still going to have him as a friend, but I'm losing him as a fellow member of the council. But I'll be joining him in a couple of years, as will the rest of us, and then we'll know how it feels. But it's sad because we're seeing the culmination of the changes that are taking place in this city, that are putting people who are very qualified, who have served the city well, and ending their tenure here, and I don't know that that's in the best interest of the public or anybody other than those that would aspire. And with that, I wish you all the best of luck, and thank you for the service you've given to all of us.
Anybody else? Now, I'd just like to say ditto to all of that. We all know, every one of us knows, that the success of a council member is based largely on the work of the staff, making sure that the council members' promises are fulfilled. And so I want to say also thank you to all of you, and I hope many of you will be able to stick around with us, and I too feel that I've made a friend in Rudy, and I hope in all of you by extension. So thank you all for your work. Okay, let's go back to the agenda.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items one through five are public convenience or necessity findings. Motion is required to grant the application, and there are cards on items three, four, and five.
Right, that's what I have. So let's call three, four, and five special. And that leaves us with items one and two. Is there anybody in the chamber who wants to be heard on items one or two? Members of the council, items one and two, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next.
Next items, Madam President, items six, seven, and nine are items, let's see, street lighting district items, and those hearings should be open, and the hearings and the ordinance continued to July 18th.
All right. We don't have any cards on any of those, so that will be the order on six, seven, and eight, six, seven, and nine, they are opened and continued to July 18th.
Item number eight is also a street lighting district. That item should be, the hearing should be opened and continued to July 20th.
Without objection, and we have no cards on that, item eight is continued to July 20th.
And item number 11 is the second hearing for the establishment of the Northridge Business Improvement District.
We have cards on that as well. So let's call that one special.
Item number 13 through 17, excuse me, 13 through 16 are building and safety assessments. Council has cards on 14 and 15.
Right, so let's call 14 and 15 special. That leaves items 13 and 16 before us. Any specials? Open the roll on 13 and 16, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved.
Next items, Madam President, items for which public hearings have been held, items 18 through 31. You have cards on...
I got them, 30 and 31.
30 and 31.
And here's another card, 31. All right, we have cards on 30, 30 special? All right, we have cards on 30 and 31, hearings have been held, but...
All right.
All right, so Mr. Burnson has called item 30 special. Any other specials?
24 and 26.
All right, Mr. Holden calls items 24 and 26 special.
Madam President?
Yes.
Item 27, just a small technical amendment. The organization listed in the report is the Valley Technology Initiative, or, excuse me, the Youth Policy Initiative. It should read Youth Policy Institute. So would that change?
Okay, let's make that correction, and then you don't need to call it special?
Correct.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, that was 27, right? Okay.
Item 31.
And Ms. Mizakowski calls item 31 special, and there's an amending motion on, well, we're not up to 34 yet. Okay, go ahead. So we have specials, 24, 26, 30, and 31. Any others? Mr. Hernandez?
I'm waiting for 38.
Okay, hold on, we'll get there. So that leaves us items 18 through 23, 25, and 27 through 29. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on 22, 23, 25, and 27.
27 as well, please.
I'm sorry? Yeah, no, I said, I did say 27.
No.
And 18 as well. 18, 22, 23, 25, and 27. Okay, that brings us to...
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 32 through 48.
All right, we have cards on 34 and 41. So we'll call those special, and are there any other specials?
Yeah, Madam Chair, could we just hold 38 on the table a second?
Yep, we can do that. Item 38, hold that on the desk.
Madam President...
Sorry, 39? All right, Mr. Holden calls 39 special, Mr. Fuhr?
Yes, not to be called special, but I want to call the council's attention a substitute motion on item 36 for some technical amendments, and I move you substitute what is before us for what's in the council agenda on 36.
Okay. Is there any objection to that? All right, 36 is now substituted. Any other specials? All right, we are now on 32, 33, 35, 36, substitute, 37, 40, 42, 43, 45, 46, 47, and 48. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. We need fourth with on 32...
And 46, please.
And 46. Okay.
On the supplemental agenda, items 49 through 51 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Yeah, Madam Chair, on item 49, we were going to respectfully request that it be continued till Friday, and we're preparing some amending motions.
All right. Mr. Holden?
On that request, you know what the amended motions are?
Right.
Why don't we just amend them today and then move it?
Right. If we had the motion, I'd do that.
Well, let's hold it on the desk until we get the motion.
Okay, let's try that, and if we get it, we'll...
The only problem with Mr. Holden's request is the committee report that's being held in Budget and Finance is not before us to amend.
There's no committee report. It just was, it's away from committee.
It's away from your committee, so the CD committee report is not before us, and we're trying to bring all that together in a motion.
You know, if somebody submits it on Friday, you don't, the amendments don't get adopted, it ain't going to be adopted without the amendments.
What we'll do is, we'll hold it on the desk.
Just hold it on the desk and try and work it out.
We'll see if we can work it out. If we don't get it worked out today, we'll continue until Friday. All right, that was item 49 we're holding on the desk. I don't have any cards on any of those items, so if there's nobody in the chamber who wants to be heard on 49, 50, or 51, the public hearings will be closed, and those 48 and 50 are now, and 51 are now before us. Open the roll on, I got that right?
Madam President, do you wish to hold 49 on the desk?
Yes, we're holding 49 on the desk, so it's 50 and 51 that are before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved.
And Madam President...
We did 46, 47, and 48, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And on item number 32, that was acceptance of bids for tax and revenue anticipation notes, and those were awarded this morning, and the winning bidders are Lehman Brothers at a true interest cost of 2.4957, Zion Bank at a true interest cost of 2.51088, JP Morgan at a true interest cost of 2.51183%, JP Morgan at a true interest cost of 2.51895, and Smith Barney at a true interest cost of 2.51898%. And that was on item number 32, and the resolution is also attached.
Okay, and now we can send it forthwith, right? Okay, I believe that brings us back to the beginning, and we are now at item three. We have several people who wish to be heard on item three. They appear to be all in favor of the proposal. Mr. Comer, Mr., I think it says Ilis, and Mr. Goobler.
Morning, Council. My name is RJ Comer. I work with Alan Madkins and represent the Hollywood and Highland Project, developed by Triziccon. You've had many items before you've on this project. These items are Caldera findings for three uses at the project, and we wanted to take the opportunity to let you know that the operators of each use are here today if you have any questions. Also, representatives of the Hollywood Police Station are here to address issues of public safety if you have any questions, but if there are no questions, there's a very lengthy agenda for you today. We'd be happy to just have you take them at your discretion.
All right, so you're suggesting the other two speakers don't want to be heard? Is that what you're telling me?
That's correct.
Less ways of questions. All right. Are there any questions? In that case, the public hearing is closed, thank you, and item three is now before us. Anybody wish to be heard? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. We move then to item four. Same list of speakers. Mr. Comer, did you want to be heard on item four and five as well? Let's do them all at once.
That's correct, Madam.
All right, so basically, your statement remains what it was before.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we'll count you as having appeared on all of them. Now, I do have on item four, I also have Claudia Gerard. Did you want to be heard? That sounds like, that looks like a no.
Perhaps I could make this a little faster for you, is that Claudia Gerard represents DFS, and then on item number five, Nick Colachus and Todd Griswold represent V3. They would be happy to address questions, but don't need to be heard on either of the items.
All right, so let's close the public hearing, and if anybody asks questions, we'll call you up on both four and five. Open the roll on items four and five, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. That should bring us to, do you need these cards?
Yeah.
Okay, here's the rest of three.
Madam President, on item number 40, there was an amending motion that was not announced or adopted. Do you wish to reconsider 40 and have that amended?
Is there any objection to reconsidering item 40? Seeing none, it's reconsidered, and the amending motion is somewhere before us? Okay, oh, yes, indeed, it's my amending motion, isn't it? Okay. All right, without objection, item 40 as amended. Open the roll, close the roll. I'm sorry? The amendment is moving some funding within my district.
Within your district.
I believe so.
I just want to make sure, because Rexon Parks was trying to amend a report that we weren't in agreement with in regards to something in my district.
Do you want me to show it to you first?
As long as it's just your district, I don't have a problem, Madam.
It is, isn't it, Amanda?
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be. All right, okay, item 40 as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, that's approved. Okay, item 11. We have several people to be heard on item 11. Elizabeth Wallow-Densel, followed by Sam Rotner and Judy Hennessy. You're not Elizabeth, I can tell. Go ahead.
Madam President, Councilmembers, my name is Sam Rotner. I'm the president of the BID Advisory Committee in Northridge. We have an overwhelming interest and support for the BID in Northridge District 12, and we hope to improve the area in many ways in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, and the other, the two ladies, did you wish to be heard as well? No? Okay, thank you. That closes the public hearing on item 11. Members of the council...
Mr. Kalan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carey.
You've closed the public hearing, which is fine. We need to report back on the protest, and I hope to have that on next Tuesday's agenda.
So we need then to continue this item? Or can we act on it?
You can act, you've closed the public hearing. We'll have a new item on next Tuesday's agenda detailing the protest and then adopting the ordinance.
All right, but we can adopt item 11 as it appears on the agenda today.
Yes, I believe so.
All right, open the roll on item 11, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That's approved.
I'm going to read the thing. Yeah.
Sure. Mr. Savornich has asked that we take item 30 out of order. Mr. Burnson, you had called item 30 special.
Yes, I would, I would ask for a staff report on that first, and then a, I would move for a half hour public hearing total. Make it 20 minutes. You're going to need it.
Twenty minutes.
Okay. Okay, we did have a full public hearing yesterday, but apparently we need, we're going to need our votes here, so we'll make it, make that a 15-minute public hearing.
All right, as far as I can tell, all these cards are against the proposal.
We'll stick to the 15 minutes because they were all heard yesterday.
All right, did you want a staff report first?
I don't think we need a staff report. Let's just have the public hearing.
All right, we are now going to have a 15-minute public hearing, and we'll just go through the people who are here as far as we get, and enter all the rest of the cards into the record, so...
11:23.
I'm sorry?
Till 11:23.
Till 11:23. And if, I would urge you therefore to not repeat, and remember, there's a long line behind you. First Douglas Carstens, followed by Ann Marie Weiss, Lisa K. Epstein, Susan Eskander, and then I will call some more.
Just to make sure we don't have 15, so we'll put 10 up.
Yeah, I know. I know. I'm sorry, Cindy, before you start, did you want to talk before the hearing? Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Honorable City Council. My name is Douglas P. Carstens. I'm an attorney with Chatten Brown and Associates, and I am here on behalf of the Chatsworth Land Preservation Association. We are vehemently opposing this general plan change and zone change. We've vehemently opposed it at every meeting, Planning Commission, Plum, every meeting there has been. We really protest the public involvement in this, which there has been very little of it. The public has not been approached by the developer. There has been no communication, there's been no coordination. The mayor has recommended disapproval on this because of that lack of community involvement and coordination. This is the job of the city council. The job of the city council is to make sure that the public is protected and is involved. We have MND changes and amendments, which I'm not even sure all the council members have copies of, because they are coming in at the last minute, and that is wrong. They should be reviewed fully and fairly. But I don't want to talk about the mitigation measures, I want to talk about the big picture. The big picture is that this is a general plan amendment. This is the Constitution. This is a document there should be reverence for and not talking in the corners about. This is the general plan. This is what the city is about, and you are changing it like, well, birds pecking at a hamburger bun in a parking lot. This general plan is a document that is a constitution that should be held up and should be controlling growth, not controlled by it. You only get four general plan amendments per year, and this will be one of them, so every one of you in your council districts will be limiting yourselves if you let this one... one go through. You get four. This was one of them. You'll only have three left for the rest of the year. Now, there was an incident yesterday, and I'll wrap up. I do appreciate. The chairman of Plum used profanity yesterday, and I object to that on behalf of the person that he used it to. The chairman had no call to use that profanity, and I think owes an apology to the people. Now, I think this is...
Mr. Carstens, this is all coming off the same time here, and if...
The same time, understood, and thank you. I really urge everybody here to say no, and if not say no, to abstain because we need 10 votes on this, and if it doesn't get 10 votes, it does not happen. I appreciate the time, and I think we should hear from other speakers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ann Marie Weiss.
Good morning, Madam President and members of council. I have spoken at many of these previous hearings, and I've written many letters with respect to the specific issues that are involved in this development. Today, I'm not going to address any of the specific issues because I'm tired and I'm frustrated. I've used half a year's vacation coming to these hearings, talking to bodies like yourself, and yet no one seems to be listening. Me and my neighbors are beginning to believe that we're wasting our time. It appears this development is a foregone conclusion. No one has asked, is this development good for the neighborhood? Is it good for the community? Or is it good for Los Angeles? The only question appears to be, how far can we push this development and how fast can we push this development without inviting a lawsuit by the neighbors? This development has been given special treatment time and time again. If you look at the procedures employed to bring this development to your attention on this date, you will see that they are highly irregular and highly suspicious. Yet no one has taken the time or has had the inclination to question the expediency with which this matter is being pursued or the advisability of this development in general. I work for the government. I'm a government employee, and as such, I've always respected our laws and our procedures. I've trusted that my government officials would represent my interests and the interests of the other constituents. However, this situation and this development has been not just an eye-opener, but a great disillusioner for everyone in my neighborhood. At this point in time, we don't believe in our city government. We don't believe we're being represented, and we don't believe we're being heard. There are many issues which this council needs to address before this plan is allowed to go forward, before the plan can be amended or the zone changed. Further environmental review is required by law. A revised tract map has not been provided for review or for public forum based upon changes made just yesterday afternoon. In addition, although ordered several times by several advisory agencies to meet with the community, the developer has refused flat, flatly refused to do so. Our own council member, Hal Burnson, has refused to meet with us. We've asked repeatedly. No one wants to cost the developer, Mr. Stein, any money, and no one wants to inconvenience him. It appears it's easier to ignore the neighborhood concerns and the neighborhood opposition. You may be asking yourself, why is this case any different from every case you hear every day? You've gone through 30 agenda items in a matter of 30 minutes. The reason you need to take a closer look at this development is because Chatsworth has something very unique to offer to this community and to this city. People from other parts of the city come to visit our park and our neighborhood because we have animals and we have a rural setting. Schoolchildren visit from inner-city schools just to have a look at a horse for the first time in their lives. We create memories in our little neighborhood. If you say no to this project, if you tell Mr. Stein you need to come back, you need to resolve these issues, this project will be here tomorrow. If you vote yes, if you treat this as a pro forma vote where everyone says aye, this piece of land will be lost forever, and my neighborhood and my home will be changed. When I open the newspaper in the morning and I look to the television, I see a lot of talk by politicians about neighborhood control. I see a lot of talk about public safety. Well, I'm asking you, if not begging you, to put those terms to use here. Give our neighborhood some input. Give us some control over what happens in our own backyard. There have been issues raised about public safety, about emergency access, about equine safety, and about the safety of our children because of this development. Listen to these concerns. Take the time to look at these concerns and give us a fair and just vote. Please, put aside your political agendas, your allegiances to other members of this board. Look at this as rational people. When you do, I'm confident you will find this development is not a good fit for this area. At the very least, I ask you to please, don't act on this matter today. Take the time to give it the review which it justly deserves. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Epstein. We're at a little over eight minutes to go. Followed by Susan Eskander and Charlotte Brody.
My name is Lisa K. Epstein, and Ann Marie Weiss has aptly mirrored my thoughts. I just want to say, I don't feel like my community has been listened to by our councilmen, by any of the council people, and I'm extremely, I don't know if I'm shocked, I'm surprised, I am disappointed. I don't feel like we've been giving a fair shake. And I'd really like you all to reconsider and vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Eskander, representing Trails and Ranch Illegal License Boarding Stable located in Chatsworth. Out of 35 boarders who come into my backyard every day, I'd say 30 of them come from other areas besides Chatsworth. Opposing this development, besides the numerous residents who have shown up to numerous hearings, are the Chatsworth Chamber of Commerce, the United Chambers of Commerce, Assemblyman Keith Richmond, our own mayor, Richard Reardon, Joel Wax. We heard from his planning deputy yesterday at the Plum Committee who urged the committee to add a bridle trail onto Panga in the interest of public safety. This is a major state highway with vehicles traveling down a 7% grade over a half of a mile long, next to horses which will be riding in the street with the flow of traffic if no bridle trail is provided. I would also like to say that Caltrans is indicating that this is a city issue, and to speak to my councilmen. Well, my councilmen won't meet with me. Even though Peter Wild, the president of our Planning Commission, advised the applicant to include this vital safety measure, no such provision has been made. To this point, our cries for our city, to our city government have gone unanswered. Please, 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 no matter what you do today, put politics aside, ignore the plan amendment, ignore the zone change, whatever you've got to do, but make sure our kids are safe when they're riding their ponies in the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlotte Brody, followed by Barry Nadell and Bill Powers.
I'm Charlotte Brody. I'm here representing the ETI Corral 54 in Chatsworth and its 200 members. And we are opposed to the overdevelopment of this property that would create hardships to surrounding properties, endanger California live oaks, and create a large safety issue for equestrians. We don't want to see the 200 to 500-year-old monarchs die because they are part of our heritage and are very sensitive to root damage. We also need to implore you to require an equestrian trail along Topanga Canyon Boulevard. This is a highly traveled route. Horses are considered vehicles and are required by law to travel in the street or in equestrian trails. Topanga Canyon Boulevard is a highly traveled road, but with an equestrian trail along its border, it becomes a safe route, as is Sunland Boulevard and Griffith Park that also have trails along highly traveled roads and freeways. Lastly, we are concerned about RA properties that are surrounding this proposed development. The new MND measures include a 75-foot setback from existing horse properties. Does this also include a required setback from vacant land adjoining this property? My last question, can the 75-foot setback be overturned by any future committees and reduced in distance? And I did notice in the LA Times today, it says, "The committee's chairman, Councilman Hal Burnson, is a friend and political ally of Stein." Is this true? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nadell.
Mr. Chairman, council members, my name is Barry Nadell. I'm a homeowner in Chatsworth. I also am a businessman, having my business in Chatsworth, California, with close to 80 employees. I read the Los Angeles Business Journal just this morning and saw that Ms. Mosikowski said, and I quote, "The idea of plunking down another century city in the West Side urban core is almost incomprehensible." I'd like to be quoted that I feel that it's incomprehensible that our councilperson, Mr. Burnson, will not listen to his community and his constituents, and it seems to be railroading this project through. An example of that is simply allowing us 15 minutes to talk on this issue before this body. I am absolutely amazed at that. I had been looking for over a year to find a lot that I could buy to build a home in Chatsworth and have my horses on my property. I had been boarding them in Chatsworth for some time. I finally found a lot, built a home, and have a legally permitted barn right next to the property that's the subject of this matter. I have taken pictures of the traffic down Topanga, which is amazing in the morning from 7:00 to 8:00, and again, from 5:00 to 6:00, and it's bumper-to-bumper and very dangerous. And we're, and the developer wants to have lots of trucks coming up and down Topanga Canyon along with the traffic, which is going to affect every person working in the Woodland Hills-Chatsworth area, where they won't be able to get to work or get home for an extra half an hour probably because of the additional traffic during the building stage. I'm amazed that there's a possibility to change a general plan in Chatsworth because of one lot and the difference of five houses being built on that one lot. And in order to build five additional houses, we're going through a general plan amendment change and a zone change, which is going to set a terrible precedent for the area so that other lots that come up will get railroaded through to have a zone change, and therefore, more overbuilding is going to be in Chatsworth, and we will lose our rural heritage. I beg you to vote no on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Powers.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm a resident of Chatsworth to be. I'm building a house there. I own commercial property there. I'm an attorney and businessman in the area. I have several businesses. I come to you representing virtually every community organization in Chatsworth. The Chatsworth Chamber of Commerce, the Chatsworth Business Improvement District, the Chatsworth Depot Foundation, the Coordinating Council, the Historical Society. Every organization in Chatsworth, business and otherwise, is adamantly opposed to this project. Why? Because it changes the essential character of Chatsworth. Chatsworth is an equestrian community, and this will create a domino effect which will ruin that. This, because of that, all those organizations were greatly concerned. They came to the United Chambers of Commerce, which represents 21 chambers in the San Fernando Valley. All 21 chambers voted unanimously in the General Assembly to oppose this project, again for the same reasons. And what are they? First, this is a betrayal of the promises this city made that this community would maintain its rich equestrian heritage. The zoning scheme was designed by this community and approved by this very body over a 20-year period. And what has happened to that? What's happening to that is it's going to be railroaded away. It will be taken away by a, by one developer who is going to change the density of this area tremendously. This is a spot zoning situation, creating a rubber-stamped subdivision in an equestrian area, and I think that's inappropriate. Are there other options available? This is not an NIMBY issue. You have to understand, this is not an NIMBY issue. This community is not opposed to development. What they're opposed to is this kind of development. The domino effect of this project is already being experienced. The lot next door is watching this very closely and is planning, again, to change the equestrian use of that property. So as each domino falls, the whole character of Chatsworth will change. Finally, I'd like to point out the politics of this. Frankly, this does not look very nice. This looks like a political pal is getting a favor over the wishes of the community. Ted Stein does not deserve to have his interests supersede the interests of the entire community of Chatsworth, from resident to businesspeople. And we've come here to represent all of those people, and we hope that you'll do the same.
Thank you. We are actually over the time that was allotted, and I'd like to suggest that the rest of you who are here to speak in opposition, if you'd like to stand so the council can see that you're here, and we will make the cards a part of the file. Okay, thank you. Well, no, unless I hear another motion, we're over the public hearing time that the council allotted. I know you didn't speak yesterday. I just need a motion from the council. I have, I have 11, I believe it's 11 more cards here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I have nine more cards. All right, okay, we, unless I hear a motion, that's what the council adopted. All right, so the public hearing is closed. All of these cards are a part of the record, please. And Ms. Mosikowski.
I'm right here, right in front of you. Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, Plum held close to a two-hour public hearing where many of the people who are here today did speak, and I think that they made an impression on the Plum Committee. And as you hear some of the discussion, you might expect that what the community would like and what is being proposed are at significant variance. And under the community plan, this property could be zoned, RA, and be developed with 16 lots. What is before us today is at most a 21-lot subdivision. So the difference in terms of density or development is potentially five lots, and it may not even be able to be achieved to be as many as a five-lot difference. But what the community did say that made an impression yesterday was the concern of the existing adjoining properties, which are horsekeeping, some have horses, some don't, but they clearly all can have horsekeeping, and that there is a horsekeeping environment. As this case had been processed forward, first for a general plan amendment, then a zone change, there has also been recently, although not before us, a tract map, a subdivision. And in that subdivision, there were additional changes offered as mitigation measures to be required in the tract map. And the community said, but what guarantee do we have that that will hold? And yesterday in committee, I made a motion, and as part of the committee report, although I'd need to, since the committee report was done hastily after our meeting last night, didn't appropriately reflect what we have asked for, I am going to make a motion today that the additional mitigation measures as part of the Planning Committee report require the 75-feet setback of any habitable room on any lot built on this subject property from the adjoining properties to the north and to the west. To the south and to the east, there are streets, and we did require on one of the streets, consistent with the general plan, a trail, a horse trail be provided. But this additional mitigation measure clarifies what is in the committee report and says that for non-habitable room structures built anywhere on this property, they shall be set back 75 feet, which is consistent to allow all existing horsekeeping and future horsekeeping on all of the adjoining lots in this community. So I think, at least it was my intent in listening to the community's testimony yesterday, that the substantive difference on the number of lots being only a number of five, but the other truly substantive concern there was the horsekeeping, not having horsekeeping denied, not having horsekeeping in any way potentially in the future negatively impacted by the houses that would be built on this property. That, in addition to some of the other requirements, there is one property that has oak trees that are almost on the property line but on adjoining property, and there is a requirement by mitigation measure that any fence property boundary line development be done after an oak tree report on the oak trees on the adjoining property to make sure that they are not interfering in any way by any kind of wall separating that property. So I think that there was a serious intent to listen to the community, listen to the community's concerns, and with those recommendations that I had asked for to be amended in Plum along with those that Mr. Burnson had asked for, the Plum Committee unanimously recommended approval of this project.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, this is a difficult case, and I just want to point out my reasoning. You've heard from some of the people in the community who, by the way, do not represent all of Chatsworth, and all of Chatsworth is not horsekeeping. But it has been preserved as a horsekeeping area mainly because of my efforts through the years to make sure that it was. There are two corners that are in question. These are, one question, one corner is before us today. It is the corner of Topanga and Chatsworth Street, a major highway, one of the busiest in the city, that runs north and south, and Chatsworth Street, which has been a secondary highway, but however ends a distance down the road to the west at Chatsworth Park. Through the years, we have had many, many requests that have come to our office for all types of commercial use, mini malls, 7-Elevens, batting cages, board and care hospitals, condominiums, apartments, you name it. We've turned them all down. There comes a time when you're looking at the end of your tenure and you try to decide what's best to... what's best to protect the community, which these people disagree with, from future commercial use because I'm afraid that when I'm gone, that's exactly what will happen. This is not exactly the type of thing that is going to endanger anybody's horsekeeping rights. The truth of the matter is, the amendments that we have put into this particular approval have protected beyond a question the ability of any of the neighbors to keep horses. There is not one single parcel that will lose horsekeeping rights because of this particular project as it's amended. As a matter of fact, the horse trail on Chatsworth Street will be improved. It is not a formal trail now. It's merely a path. Topanga Canyon, anybody that wants to have a horse path on Topanga Canyon Boulevard with about 30,000 or 40,000 vehicles a day coming down the hill is not using great judgment. And there has not been a bridle trail there either below or above in this particular area. Provisions are being made for a crossing of Topanga because we have a large horsekeeping area that stretches to the east all the way to De Soto. And as a result, I felt that this is a good buffer between the lower-- the higher density to the south, and we do have higher density that goes to the south and extends all the way down to Devonshire and beyond. So this is not exactly a domino, and this is not going to create a deluge of infractions on horsekeeping properties. This is a protective measure, and I know that there are people that disagree with me on that, but in my mind, and I know the district pretty well, and I know what type of requests we've had and what type of development we've allowed to take place there, this is something that I believe in the long run will preserve the horsekeeping and not be impacted by shopping centers and other types of commercial uses, which I fear will follow after I leave council and after some of the members who are here leave. So I would urge, number one, we need to overturn the mayor's veto, and I think we all know why that was done. This was the only veto the mayor has exercised in eight years. Surprisingly, it was Ted Stein who wouldn't support his candidate for mayor. So we get a little insight on-- that's the truth. Oh, how the truth doth hurt, but it is the truth. And everybody around this council circle knows it. The point is that I would ask that we support the committee report, we overturn the mayor. I want to ask the city attorney, how do we need to vote on this, city attorney? We need first override the mayor, is that it?
You would adopt the committee report, which would be-- which is overriding the mayor's--
Equivalent, which would override the mayor.
Yes, and you need 10 votes.
Okay, that would be my motion. I support the amendments, which have-- the additional clarifications of amendments which Ms. Zikowsky has made, and I would urge and I vote on it.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, you know, one of my parting experiences is going to be being able to sit on the Plum Committee. And it's because sitting on the Plum Committee, I think I bring a perspective that's different from the perspective that Plum has had in the past. And I think that when you look at the city's overall city plan, there are many different kinds of communities with a lot of overlays and protections and other communities that don't have them. When I look at housing and I look at an acre of land, they're talking about putting 130 units on that acre, and that's what makes it affordable for people. Here, you're talking about open land. You're talking about ranch houses and basically boarding establishments on a one, two-acre parcel where they basically can have horses and animals. And they have the sights of the mountains and it's the kind of the environment that horses should have. But you also need to know that there's a highway that has trucks that drive on it and cars, and that impacts those-- that particular horsekeeping environment. And that highway's there and it's been there. Now, when I was looking at this lot, and I was dealing with some of the issues that people were testifying, because it was a two-hour hearing, I was listening very carefully. And one of the things I was relating to was the fact that my sister lives on La Tuna Canyon, on a three-acre parcel with a ranch house, and she used to have horses. But she found it easier to board her horses in one of the boarding locations on La Tuna Canyon. At one time, she had three. She ended up with two, and now she basically has three again. And she would rather do that. But in some of the parcels, they developed some housing on La Tuna Canyon Boulevard. In one case, there's 11 units; in another case, there's 13 units. And all those neighbors, believe it or not, have horses. But they don't keep them on their property. They keep them in the boarding communities. The reason they want to live in La Tuna Canyon is because of the horses. We had a gentleman who testified that he was trying to find a lot in Chatsworth because he boarded his horses in Chatsworth. And now he has a lot and he can keep his horses on his own property. There are also people who want to have-- live in Chatsworth because they have horses, but they just won't be boarding them on their property. And that's what I think this is part of that transition. I just wanted to kind of share that because we're not talking about 130 acres a unit, I mean an acre, I mean 130 units an acre. We're talking probably six. Now, I think the actions the Plum Committee did, and again, Mr. Bernson was in agreement with all of them from the very beginning, were to basically make sure we protected the right of those establishments that currently care for horses. And that was that 75-foot setback. That will also impact the number of units that can go in that acre. I keep on saying acre, but it's more like seven acres, six and a half acres. Members, this was not an easy decision. I remember when City Hall basically was the tallest building in the city. People talk about that. Things are changing. And I think Mr. Bernson had a very difficult time with this one, and he used all his experience and knowledge to try and work out a compromise that works. And again, I know it wasn't easy for you, and I know that your constituents aren't happy, and that's probably the discomfort you're feeling, but the process, I think you're using your experience to make something work for everybody.
Anybody else? Okay, open the roll on item 30, as amended or corrected by the comments Ms. Zikowsky read. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved as amended. No, okay. All right, that puts us back in order to, I believe, item 14. And we had Gary McDonald wish to be heard on item 14.
Yeah, Madam Chair, could we ask that item 45 be forthwith because there's some CED or some youth center positions that have to be up?
All right, item 45, forthwith, please. Mr. McDonald, go ahead. We're back on 14 now.
Hi. Madam President, members of the city council, I apologize. I'm not a great public speaker. I stand before you not really clear on how to address this issue. It troubles me greatly. Basically, this is nothing more than the bottom line of an extortion attempt to get me to transfer property to an individual. Basically, an individual has a friend inside City Hall, and I realize that you do not fight insiders who have corrupted the system. I believe-- I believe that if you look at your report of the nuisance, you'll see that the nuisance was noticed to the owner on November 5th of 99, and that 15 days were provided. Yet if you look, the city of Los Angeles claims that they waited a year, one year, before they went in and executed this work. And let me tell you, all this was, was a scam to deny due process and to obtain the property. On November 5th, I received the notice. I abated the property. I met with the inspectors. I had several contractors who insisted on buying the property. I refused. Somehow or another, there was a $60,000 property tax assessment put on the property. I went to the city attorney's office and found out that $35,000 of that was bogus, that it was wrongfully assessed. I paid the balance. Out of the clear blue sky, after the inspector had signed it off, I get noticed that a fence has to be constructed and the place has to be boarded up. I immediately proceeded to board the place up, and the fencing specs that the city of Los Angeles developed are impossible to construct. And basically, the city did go out and put up the fence. I do not expect the taxpayers of Los Angeles to eat the cost of putting up a fence. I'll pay that cost, but I do think it's wrong to assess 40%. I do think that the report itself speaks loudly. The initial date was November 5th, 1999. The nature of the problems on the property were so substantial that only 15 days was provided to abate it. Why then a year later? And I believe that provides ample evidence before this city council that, in fact, the building department, the city, did sign off on it after the problem was fixed, and then after refusing to sell, somehow or another, this was moved back on. Now, I realize that I'm not the only one here today on this item. Item 15, I believe, has the same problem. And all I'm asking for is that you allow me to pay the $2,699.90 and not be assessed the other 40%. I did the board up, and there was no graffiti.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That closes the public hearing. We have somebody here from Building and Safety. Do you want to explain this to us?
Good morning.
Thank you. Let's make sure we have-- yeah, almost. Let's make sure your mic is on. All right, I think you're all right. Go ahead.
Okay. This complaint started in your office, from your office, over 10 years ago.
10 years ago?
Yes. It started out with unapproved additions and unapproved conversion from a single-family dwelling to a triplex. There were several arrests. I believe there was a murder at the site, and the building was vacated probably four or five years ago. We started on it when it became vacant. We gave time. We had transition in personnel. Time was lost. We picked it up again. There were two new owners since. We started on the site, and we did what the abate order had said it was going to do, and the notices were recorded on title.
Well, the gentleman's basically objecting to the-- not to the cost of the fence, but to the 40% charge. So could you-- 40%?
The administrative costs for administering the contracts, for monitoring our contractors and doing the work. That's what it's for.
All right, thank you. So Building and Safety recommends confirming the assessment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, from time to time, we hear such requests being made and sometime granted due to extenuating circumstances. I think each of us have had a similar situation to occur in our district, and sometime through no fault of the owner, either they were not properly notified, if they were notified in timely fashion, there's no record to show that they received certified mail, but this gentleman said that accused us of trying to have him lose his property, sell his property to someone he didn't want to sell it to. And he was saying he's virtually being harassed, essentially being harassed. And he cited some examples of the harassment. That doesn't look good for the city, given the fact that he said, "I've done A, I've done B, I've done C." Now, if somebody's got some inside connection where that can happen, I would have a problem with that. The reason why I raise his issue is because I too have a piece of property in another city. And every time I turn around, "Cut the weeds, cut the weeds, cut the weeds." So I cut the weeds, cut the weeds, cut the weeds. But since I hired a contractor who has friends, they don't bother me about cutting the weeds anymore. He's on a annual contract, and even though the weeds are harder than they ought to be with it, I think they're safe and we're required to get back out there. That happens. So here's an example where things like that can happen. And I got some concern about it. In my case, in my district, we have negotiated this additional fee because the owner of the property did make an effort. They did due diligence, in other words, to try to correct the problem, and some things went wrong even on our side. I can only respectfully request, it's up to you, you're the councilperson, you care about your district, you do a good job there, you care about the citizens as well, and I know that to be a fact. So I would just say that if you want to sit down and talk to this person, we have done that before, and at least we don't want him around badmouthing the city. You know, at least give him a fair hearing. I would respectfully request that.
Well, we have two more items coming up, three actually, coming up that seem to be a similar problem. One of them is in your district, Mr. Holden, and two of them are in District 9. I'd like to suggest that we hold this on the desk for a moment, and then I'll have somebody talk to the gentleman, and then we'll see what to do with it later. Thank you. All right, the next one is item fif-- sorry, 15. And on item 15, I have two people who wish to be heard, Ted Brass and Willie Wells. Mr. Brass?
Madam President, Honorable Counsel, I'm here basically as the property manager for Mr. and Mrs. Wells, and certainly we feel that the process of having erected the fence and cleaned the yard should certainly have been done, even though Mr. Wells actually took over the property in '98 from a brother who was terminally ill and, over the last seven years of ownership, was hospitalized, and neither he nor his wife was aware of the abatement issue, the citation, or any of those items that were done. He only recently became aware of the entire process when the notice was given here. So what we're essentially asking is that the fees be reduced. I understand that the work was done. Right now, the process, the property has been well-maintained over the last-- since 1998, since he's taken over. It's been painted, redone, totally rehapped, and people are actually living there and is prospering. So we're asking that the council consider reducing the fees that were assessed, the penalties, that 30%, 40%, or whatever that is, and it will then be added and then paid for at the time that he sells the property.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Wells, did you also want to be heard?
No.
No, okay, thank you. That closes the public hearing. And yes--
Well, the reason I hadn't done too much about it because during the time when the property was turned over to me after my brother passed, they said that whatever needed to be done, we didn't have anything to do with it. So we just didn't know how to go about to do different things on it. But we're willing to do whatever we can to try to improve and whatever we can to do on it.
All right, thank you. That closes the public hearing. And Ms. Walters' office has asked that we continue this item till Friday, and the gentleman right behind you there, Rodney, wants to talk to you about the whole situation. That brings us to item 16. I don't have any cards on 16, sorry. All right, so we're now up to item 24. Mr. Holden, you had called item 24 special.
Madam President, members of the council, item 24 is asking for permission to transfer the authority for identifying the sites, brownfield sites, and keeping with the implementation of Polanco Act in support of the brownfields revitalization program. The authority now rests with the commission or the board, and that's a request been made to transfer that to the general manager, whatever you call that department guy over there, the administrator, CRA administrator. And it worked okay up until now under the previous administration, and I don't know what could happen between now and the next six months. That's the length of the administrator's contract if it's not renewed. And identifying these sites and appropriating the funding and being given that authority, I think that we should wait until a new administration is in and placed and let them decide whether or not they would like to transfer their authority from the commission to the administrator. And I would respectfully request that this matter be continued.
Well, let me just mention that-- Well, let me just mention that the CRA was able to be very helpful on Brownfield site in my district, and they were able to bring in money and do what needed to be done and house the specialists from the federal government, so they can do the job.
That's right, they're being done that way right now, so I don't want to change it until the new administration says they would like to do that. They should have something to say about whether or not they would like to change the operation over there.
And what is it about this that is a change?
That means that the commissioners or the board have the authority today to do it, and they're going to transfer that to the administrator. And I think that...
And I believe that was the recommendation of the board.
I understand, well, that board's going out.
Well, that's why they did it, so there wouldn't be a disconnect.
Oh, no, no, we got a new board, and I, you know, give the new administration the benefit of the doubt. They have an attorney working over there from the city attorney's office, they know the operation. Let them decide if they want to concur with this request. If they do, I will vote for it.
Okay, hold on. Mr. Hernandez is next.
I was surprised to hear Mr. Holden's comments, because this went through our committee, and he's a member of that committee. Members of the council, what the action that's before us is asking is that we allow CRA to play a lead role on Brownfield issues in CRA areas. And that's the role they've been playing.
Yeah, we're not changing it.
That's not changing. And the other part we're not changing is the four hundred and twenty-five million dollars that, I mean, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that's before us is block rent. It's a twenty-six-year block rent, and that was part of the block rent process. Now, that also continues to go through CED. I just wanted to mention that to Mr. Holden. Now, one of the issues I've had with CRA, and I think we all have had with CRA, has been the fact that it's overseen by a board that's appointed primarily by the mayor and then supported by us. And I think that the mayor's office has basically had oversight of CRA and will continue to have oversight of CRA, particularly if they change all the board members. So I just, again, I'm just trying to move this thing, it doesn't matter to me whether we continue it or not, but listening to Mr. Holden's arguments, all I want to say is it's block rent money that's used as basically a match for Brownfield projects. CRA has been playing the role in CRA areas anyway, and it's been my experience that they currently have the expertise, and that's why I didn't have a problem when it went through committee.
Okay, Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden, did you want to be heard again?
As I said before, I, Mr. Hernandez, done a good job in that committee. I sat with him there, maybe that day I was perhaps not present in voting, but there are some changes being made with CRA, and I think that the new administration should, at least on this issue, it's not a lot of money, but it's critical, let them have the hot foot if there's going to be one, not that the previous administration, outgoing administration, will make that decision. A lot of action could take place between now and the first of the year. We don't know what their intentions are in terms of retaining or whatever the personnel. So I would just say let them bite the bullet. As I said yesterday, there's a matter coming to the ninth district that would not affect the outgoing council person, but the new incoming, so let that person make that decision, as we did with Mr. Garcetti, when we requested that he make the, take the vote. And I, hey, it's a reasonable request. New administration did not ask me to do that, but it's something that I saw and thought I might suggest it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for the second time.
One, I don't know of any current, again, I don't mind us continuing it for two weeks if that's satisfactory with Mr. Holden. I just don't know if there are any potential projects that are impacted by this authority. And if there isn't, there shouldn't be a problem. What I do know is that the whole Brownfields' area application process, the previous director that we had as part of the team is no longer with us, and right now, that's someone who we're looking for. And I would ask, who would do the Brownfield applications that could receive these monies from the Polanco Act if we don't have anybody authorized to do that? I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, well, I don't know the answer to that question, and I don't see anybody else rushing to answer it either. Mr. Holden's going to answer.
There are no sites being requested at this time, if somebody know of any sites, let them come forward and associate.
Well, here comes some from CRA's office, because I know the site, potential site right away in the cornfields.
Trish Lee Carey from the CRA's office. I don't know the exact name of any of the sites, the CRA would know that, and no one is here to answer that question right now, but I do know that when they choose the sites, the Brownfields' executive team and the Brownfields' resource team makes those decisions, and that's compromised of agents, the agency staff, mayor's economic development staff, the CRA, various different city groups.
Do you know if there are any projects in process or any applications pending at the moment?
I know that there are two or three. I don't know the exact, Sears maybe, I'm not sure, I don't want to say that because I'm not positive, but I do know that they have two or three projects right now.
Could we maybe just continue this till next week? That way, when I say next week, if there is any objections by the mayor's office, they could let us know. And then you could go from there.
And I might add that it is my belief that the new administration will carry over some of the personnel on the business team from the current administration, and so you'd have continuous information flowing. So it would not, if those sites that you mentioned, then of course, would not be impeded in terms of moving forward, so.
Well, how about if, is continuing until next week, okay, that'll be into the new...
That'll be fine.
All right, and since Wednesday is a holiday, how about if we continue it till Friday of next week, which is the sixth? All right, so item twenty-four is continued to July 6th. And Mr. Savornich still here? Mr. Savornich wanted to take another one of these out of order. Which one? Thirty-four. Mr. Savornich has, what do you, okay. Is there any objection to taking thirty-four out of order? All right, item thirty-four is something we approved a couple of weeks ago, but we added some conditions at the, when we approved it, so that what's before us today is the revised ordinance, right?
Yep.
The revised ordinance that includes the conditions that we had added. So we've now got the required documents with the changes that include the findings, resolutions for the general plan amendment, zone change, and site plan review, as well as the sequel findings and mitigation monitoring program. And that motion is floating around here somewhere, it should be on your desks. Because it is a new, newly revised ordinance, I believe it is appropriate for us to hold another public hearing?
Yes.
Yes. So that being the case, I have one, two...
Madam Chair, before you start the public hearing, my questions were answered on item thirty-eight. Do you mind if we just take that off the table?
No, I don't mind at all. Item thirty-eight, we had been holding on the desk. If there's no objection, we'll vote on that now. Item thirty-eight is before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That's approved.
Thank you.
Okay, item thirty-four, I have one, two, three, four, five people who wish to be heard. We'll start with Mr. Feldman, followed by Mr. Nuss, Mr. Hughes, oh, that's a blank card, Ms. Watson, and then Mr. Simmons.
My name is Bill Feldman. I live in Los Angeles since about forty-six, an active industrial real estate broker specializing in that field alone for over thirty years. I like to speak to the ordinance. It may be good for the housing, but it is bad, very bad for business. This is an active industrial area. It is not in transition. It is in transition from one type of industrial use to another. It is not in transition to C2 type of uses. This property is not an abandoned property. It is sold and resold three times in the last three years at substantial profits, and there are currently offers on this property, offering the present owners a handsome profit. It is neither abandoned, nor it's in transition. Have no doubt that you will lose jobs. I got a letter yesterday from one of my nearby tenants, where we owned the building, saying, asking, and the letter's in my, in my briefcase, that they will cancel their lease on forty-five day notice if the apartment project goes ahead. We depend upon this city for consistent planning and zoning. The businesses in that, understand, the businesses in that area...